Have a lot of history with the district and I hope I don't bore you with what I go over tonight. But I think there's some that don't know as much about the district. So I'd really like to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about the district. How long we've been around, what we do, some of the key decisions that we've made over the history of the district. And how we as a partnering municipal member of this community work with you guys to move forward. And serve water, provide wastewater services and coordinate community impacts on those services. Give you a little bit of background, the district was formed in 1951. We always like to point out, we were here before the city even. There was a group of community members who decided that they needed water and wastewater services. They formed the district in 1951. They had, well, they actually had a vote whether they were going to form the district in 1951. And in 51, the vote came back, yes, we wanted a water district. No, we don't want a sanitation district. They were going to do it by septic system. So they formed the water district in 1951. We actually started, the district started serving water to the community in 1953. And they went back and had a later vote. They didn't like the septic system. They had a vote, do we want to make it also a sanitation district? And they voted yes, and we started supplying the wastewater services to the area in 1958. Our sources of water during the early development of the district, and when I talk about early development, this was the early 1950s to the late 1960s. And I personally wasn't here. I wasn't born until 61 and I was only about seven in 1968 when a lot of these decisions got made. But I learned a lot of the history from Mayor Ford's father, Larry Ford. He worked for and was on the board for the district for 54 years. And definitely knew all the history of the district and thankfully shared a lot of that history with me. So that's how I learned about some of the key decisions that the district had to make during those early years. Their first plan was to use deep wells. Like a lot of the communities, we've all heard the stories about the southern communities. Rappahoe County, Douglas County that built their cities and their municipal areas on groundwater, deep groundwater supplies. And many of those communities now, those groundwater supplies are starting to run out. They aren't lasting as long as they thought they would. And they've had to now start to look for replacement supplies for those deep groundwater supplies. They're buying surface water rights, buying water from Denver Water. They're looking for alternatives for the deep wells. So the first plan was, the deep wells was going to be our plan. The founding fathers of the district quickly saw that those deep wells didn't produce enough water to provide enough water for the community. So they understood quickly that they were going to have to deviate from that plan. It wasn't going to be sustainable for this area. So as hard as it was, because deep wells have really high quality water. It would have been nice to have that high quality water, but in the long run, it's worked out well for this community. We haven't had to go search for a replacement water supply like many of those southern communities have had to do. Second was the surface water supply. The two surface water bodies that we're all aware of in this area are the South Platte River and a couple of ditches that run through the district. The O'Brien Canal, which is part of the Farmers Reservoir and Irrigation Company, Freiko. And the Fulton Ditch, which enters the city and the district service area about 104th Avenue. The problem with all the surface water supplies, the South Platte River and the two ditches at that time, there was a high concentration of wastewater, really almost untreated wastewater in the South Platte River because the metro wastewater hadn't been built yet. And a lot of the cities were just doing primary treatment on their wastewater flows. So surface water really wasn't a viable alternative at that time. And that's why the district didn't go in that fashion. The next one's Denver Water. Again, Mayor Ford's father had multiple discussions with Denver Water about potentially having the district connect onto Denver. I know that South Adams cooperatively with Brighton on multiple occasions went to Denver and considered alternatives to connect onto Denver. But the three parties were just never able to come to that agreement. And were unable to get Denver Water for this service area. The last kind of water alternative that they saw was alluvial groundwater. This is shallow wells. And in this area, they tend to be prolific. We're in the deep paleo channels, the old river system that used to flow through this area just happens to run right through the middle of our district. So the alluvial groundwater was a viable supply, plentiful. Seemed that it was going to be able to meet the needs of the community. And that's ultimately what they chose. And like I said, in 1968, a lot of these decisions were made. They couldn't come to an agreement with Denver Water. They pretty much decided, we're going with alluvial supplies. And in the 70s, they started and completed one of the first, what's called an augmentation plan in the state of Colorado. When you have shallow groundwater supplies, they're considered a junior water right on the South Platte River. And when you pump junior rights, you have to make sure the senior rights are fully protected. So this augmentation plan makes sure that we have ditch rights, senior surface water rights that we can replenish for those pumped groundwater supplies to keep all the senior water rights on the South Platte River whole. So again, that was in the 1970s when they decided to move forward with that plan. Give you an idea of our current water supplies. Our current demands are about 10,000 acre feet of water a year. Each single family home uses about half an acre foot a year, actually a little bit less than that. So right now, we have the equivalent of about 29,000 single family homes on our system. We convert commercial into single family just as a measuring guide for how we calculate the demands on our system. We, in our current supplies, we have 12,000 acre feet of potable alluvial supplies. So these are shallow alluvial wells that we pump and put into our potable system. They're treated at the Klein Water Treatment Facility before they go into the distribution system. And then we have 10,000 acre feet of irrigation alluvial supplies. As everybody's aware, we have the separate irrigation system in the northern area of the district. And we have about 10,000 acre feet of alluvial wells that we can pump and provide into that system. We do have 4,000 acre feet of Denver treated water. Even though in 68, couldn't come to agreement with Denver. In 1996, actually it was 1998, 30 years later. As part of the Record of Decision of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, the Army and Shell Oil agreed to pay $48,000 to the district to help us go out and secure a kind of a supplemental water supply. And that water supply ended up being Denver water, treated water from Denver Water. We got 4,000 acre feet. We started taking a portion of that in 1999 and still take it today. And it's a permanent 4,000 acre feet of supply in our, in our system. We've also got 5,000 acre feet of Denver surface water supplies. This was a supply that Denver had a water court settlement with the Farmers Reservoir and Irrigation Company, Freiko. And as part of that settlement of a water court case, Denver turned over 5,000 acre feet of water to Freiko. It was municipal water supply, so Freiko couldn't use it in their agricultural system. But they could sell it to a municipality. And there were a number of municipalities that were interested in buying it. We were able to work with our development group, including Shea Homes, and put together the winning bid, bidding package on that supply. And we're able to acquire that 5,000 acre feet of water. It's really been a supply that's helped us really get that northern development moving and productive. And then we also got another 1,200 acre feet of Lost Creek Groundwater Basin. This is out in the Prospect Valley area, 26 miles northeast of our community. It's again, a groundwater supply, but it's, you know, it's kind of a protected groundwater supply that's fully reusable. And we're going to, when we need that, we probably won't need it for probably 30 more years. But when we do need it, we'll pipe that, that supply back into our service area and use it here. So those things, when you add them all up, is about 30,000 plus acre feet of water. As I said, our current demands are about 10,000 acre feet. So we have enough water as a community to triple in size. There's very few communities in the metropolitan area that can make that claim. So we're proud of that. And we couldn't have done it without the partnership between our district, your city, and the development community. I think we've all done a good job of securing those water rights and really providing a secure water future for the community. Talk a little bit about challenges with alluvial groundwater. The first and kind of biggest one that we've always heard about is the hardness. Shallow groundwater supplies have high levels of minerals, especially calcium and magnesium. And water that contains those two compounds are generally considered to be hard. Historically, the district hasn't had a central treatment system. Because with hardness, to take calcium and magnesium out of the water, you typically always end up with some kind of a brine solution. If you do RO, it's a brine. A lot of communities are trying to decide how to appropriately deal with that. You can't just return it back to the river. Some communities are doing deep well injection. That's not an alternative for this community with the history of deep well injection that we've had. We know that, we've always known that wasn't a viable solution for this community. Other things like ion exchange, you also end up with a brine solution that you can't return back at your wastewater plant. So that was a reason we never looked at something like that. There's a new treatment technology and it's new to the US, it's not new to Europe, called pellet softening, where you take the calcium and magnesium out of the water. It's attracted onto a seed material. It's basically, it's the same calcium carbonate material. You make a bigger pellet and put this pellet into drying bins. It gets completely dry and you can legally landfill it if you have to. But there's also lots of opportunities to use it for secondary solutions like drywall, cement, porcelain. So we're looking at all those alternatives to see if we can effectively reuse that material after we're done treating our water. The other challenge with alluvial groundwater is the risk of contamination. Surface activities can seep into the ground and make their way into the alluvial water supplies. And we've experienced this over our history. Back in the late 50s and 60s and early 70s, we had agricultural contamination. There were still a lot of farming activities in the community. And some of those local farming activities would get high nitrate levels into the groundwater. And ours never got as high as like Brighton's did, but they were elevated because of those activities. Pretty much all those activities have stopped in our area around our alluvial wells. So those nitrate levels have dropped significantly and well below drinking water standards. But it was something that we dealt with in the early history of the district. The next thing was volatile organic contaminants, VOCs. Again, I think everybody's aware, in the mid 1980s, the district found low levels of these VOCs in its alluvial supplies. The sources of those VOCs was the Arsenal and other superfund sites that are in the area. The Army and Shell worked with the district to pay for and build the granular activated carbon facility at 74th and Quebec. And again, provided us 48 million to get a supplemental water supply. And that's ultimately what we used to get, used that to pay for a portion of the 4,000 acre feet of Denver Water. There's some new emerging contaminants. We've been sending out some information on compounds called PFOS. We've also, a few years ago, had a compound called 1-4-dioxane. These are considered emerging contaminants. EPA hasn't decided if they think they need to establish drinking water standards on them. They have health advisories on them. And luckily, with all the treatment processes and everything we've had in place, even though we see these compounds at very low levels, those, or those levels that we see are below the health advisory standards that EPA has determined. Right now, on those emerging contaminants, we're working with the state and EPA and federal regulators to identify the sources of those, where those compounds are coming from. And we're going to try to mitigate and eliminate those sources if at all possible. Looking ahead, it's important to us as a water district, and I know to all of us as a community, to make every effort to protect its water supplies. To do this, we need to closely monitor all surface activities and minimize the future impact on our water supplies. We want to make sure that we cut off any potential contamination streams, leaking tanks, leaking pipelines, poorly constructed facilities, landfills. We've got to be careful with all those types of things. And I know we as a community want to do that. We feel really good about the partnership that we have with the city. We've talked on a number of occasions with city staff about oil and gas systems in our community. And I think we're working together to effectively develop the opportunity to utilize the benefits of these oil and gas wells in the community, but to also mitigate the potential hazards. I know we've had the opportunity to comment on the operating procedures and permitting processes, emergency response plans. The city's done a good job of working with us to give us the opportunities to review and comment on all those things. And it's really, the role that we want to play on this is, you know, first thing, in conformance with our rules and regulations, to provide water and wastewater services. We will provide those services to all permitted uses on properties that are included in our district. So if a property to actually be served by us, you have to include your property into our district, be taxed by our district. If you go through that process and our board approves the inclusion into our district, we will provide water and wastewater service to your property, subject to you meeting our rules and regulations. We would also like to provide input into proper approval of procedures. But we have, we'll give very limited participation in the actual approval process. I think that's going to be the responsibility of the state, whoever's permitting those operations. It's going to be their responsibility. And I think from what we've seen, if they follow the guidelines for proper installation of infrastructure and facilities, we should be protected. But again, we don't have the expertise in-house to perform that function. That's really going to be up to the state. We want to make sure that we ensure adequate separation from district wells. The main thing there is, you know, we've seen that there's recommended distances between oil and gas wells and drinking water wells. With the main purpose of, if there is a emergency spill or some surface activity that happens, you put them far enough away that you have time to respond to that properly, clean them up, and make sure that there's no pathway into the groundwater. We do want to provide input into the ERP process. If there is spills, leaks, fires, anything like that, we want to be part of the process to implement proper procedures. But we also want to be part of the process to monitor cleanup activities and make sure it's done appropriately and protective of our water supplies. One thing that we would ask the city and the state is possible reworking of old wells to ensure proper protection. I'm not sure any of us know exactly how those wells were constructed, whenever they originally drilled, some of those old casings and some of the concrete liners that were in place back in the 60s and 70s when they might have been drilled, could be aging and not be as protective as they once were. So if there's any opportunity to rework and improve old and existing wells, we would ask for you guys to consider that. So I'll stop there and let you ask any questions you might have of me. And here's my contact information. I always encourage you, anytime you have any questions about anything associated with the district, don't hesitate to give me a call. I'd be glad to talk with you.
Well, first of all, Jim, I want to thank you for coming in. I, it's important to do this on a regular basis, not just when we find something in the water or we identify something or we're dealing with oil and gas. Because the relationship that the city has with the district is you, you guys are your own government entity as a special district. And we're growing at a rate where most of our residents don't realize that the city doesn't control the water. It's two different entities. And so we want to make sure that we try to make, make it apparent that if you have water questions or concerns, that you talk to the district and so that we're being good neighbors. You talked about the need that right now, we're using about 10,000 acre feet a year for the around 30,000 single family dwellings. I know that you guys have more services provided than, than just the city. Older parts of Adams County that are, that are in your original service area that aren't within the boundaries of the city. Do you know how much of that 10,000 acre feet goes to non-city properties? Just, just out of curiosity?
I don't know the exact number. I can definitely look that up and I'll get you the numbers. But I'm guessing that it's 5 to 10% is non-city, outside the city, unincorporated Adams County. The vast majority is in the city.
Right. And, and that's what I kind of figured was probably 5 to 10%. We now have a working relationship and agreements that the district won't serve any new development outside of the city boundaries. So we know that won't increase. It'll actually decrease through more, more uses in the city and it'll decrease that percentage of non-city. But you guys do serve more than outside of the city boundaries. So you do have customers that are unincorporated. And some of those customers were mandatory through the Arsenal cleanup process. People's wells that were affected through the, through the plume. They were, had the opportunity through the Army to get connection outside of the city boundaries as well. I think it's just, it's important that we constantly have this dialogue because the last thing I want is residents to be wary of whether the water's safe to drink. And, you know, I think that's a key concern, I would imagine, for the entire council is just to make sure that we hear it from the district, the water's safe to drink. You know, when you come out with the Teflon discussion and the 1-4-dioxane, I think it's really important to expand on the fact that that is below any standards that are set. And I know they haven't even set some, some parameters. And now we're testing in parts per billion versus years ago, parts per thousand and parts per million. And, and so I'd like to have you touch a little bit on how we test and how much more minute impacts you're able to identify. And then if someone does contaminate any of our water supply, how you trace that back, identify who has had a negative effect on our drinking water supply and how you go about making sure that's corrected. I think those are some key questions I'd like to have for the residents.
Okay. I'd like to start with one comment. We do have some very small areas of unincorporated Adams County. And we can still serve our, provide our services in those small areas based on intergovernmental agreements we have with the city, where those parties may not have to include in this, or annex into the city. They may have to, depending on circumstances associated with their development. But we've got agreements between the two of us that explain the process for both of us to review those applications to see if they're going to have to annex or if they can be served still as an unincorporated Adams County customer. So we might get a little bit of development. It's not going to be much. The area out to the northeast is all controlled by the general improvement districts. Any development out there is going to be tying on to GID infrastructure. So everything out there is going to, if they want service from us, they're going to have to annex to the city as well. So that's for the first thing. As far as these compounds that we're talking about now, we're into the parts per trillion. We're not, we're even blew past billion already. So these are really, really low levels. Some of the, just like EPA has what they call uncontaminated, uncontaminated or unregulated compound monitoring programs. And they had one of these in 2013 and 14. And that's when we did our first sampling for the PFOS compounds. And the detection levels back then were in the 25 to 40 parts per trillion range. We didn't see anything. So we were below those reporting limits at that time. Now, those reporting limits are down to two parts per trillion. So even, even though their health advisory standards are at 70, we have, we have limits that are, you know, above two. Right now, we're, we're in about the 25 part per trillion range. So just in a few years, they were able to increase the monitoring capabilities of the equipment and able to lower those reporting limits down. So that's what, something we're constantly dealing with. As Mayor Ford said, back in the 70s, parts per million were really kind of the controlling, right? In 80s, the equipment got better and they could start seeing a parts per billion. That's when they saw the VOC compounds in the district's drinking water supplies. Now they're getting equipment that can see in parts per trillion. One of the responses that we've taken to both 1-4-dioxane and these PFOS compounds is, and we're one of the few labs in the nation that have done this, is we have the equipment for 1-4-dioxane. We're in the process acquiring the equipment, monitoring equipment for the PFOS compounds. We can actually analyze for those compounds on our own. And right now, there's probably only two or three only two or three labs in the whole country that can do that. Uh, that gives us a great advantage. We can see things thicker uh faster, uh, we can respond to them. Uh, if we need to make changes in our operations, we can make those on the fly. And getting to Mayor Ford's comment, we can uh do a monitoring program. We have a a a lot of existing monitoring wells throughout our service area. You know, we can sample those wells, see if we have the compounds, and that'll start guiding us to where the sources of the compounds come from. Uh, we're also working with the state, EPA, uh, city and county of Denver. Uh, anybody who has monitoring wells in this area, we're working with those entities to get access to their monitoring wells, so we we can sample those as well and and hopefully uh track and identify the sources of these compounds.
Great, thanks, Jim. I I appreciate that. And the one impact that that wasn't mentioned is uh Scott's Scott's Liquid Gold had a had an impact on a lot of our personal wells in this particular area, because how the flows came from that Scotland Scots Liquid Gold plant, and you were able to identify back then who uh contributed to that contamination and and that uh had an effect on uh the with the arsenal and the Scots Liquid Gold of getting all the folks that lived along Quebec that were on well water for potable purposes um switched over to potable water uh through the district.
That's correct. And as far as the 1-4 dioxane, we've pretty well been able to pinpoint that down to the old chemical cells facility. It was a chemical uh facility down at 46th and and Holly, I believe, 46th, 48th, right in there. And they had some old leaking tanks that had the compounds in there, and we pretty well identified that as the source and and the main and uh high percentages of of the source contributing to that compound. So we're working with EPA and the state now to try to figure out solutions to mitigate that source and to try to cut it off and and so that we don't have to deal with that for uh very long in the future.
Great, thank you. I want to uh go to the council, allow them to ask any questions or have any comments. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Teeter?
Thanks, Mr. Jones, for your presentation tonight. I think it's important to say again that uh, again, that your lab found this chemical that we are now um uh working on, not Tri-County or EPA or the state, that your people found this ahead of everybody else, and that's great.
Just to clarify, we we did the testing. We couldn't at the time analyze for the compounds, but we did the testing without anybody telling us to, but we voluntarily did it, just because we've been reading so much about it in industry trade magazines and everything. So we wanted to make sure to really know what the situation was, so we sampled, we sent it out to one of the two labs that could test for it, uh, but it was at our action and nobody else uh made it, so you're you're right on that.
Anyone else? Um, I need some hands, because I'm not seeing any of this lit up. Uh, Mr. Davis?
Uh, Mr. Jones, thank you for coming tonight. Um, I had a few questions from residents, uh, knowing that I was going to be here tonight and they're uh, some of the questions were, are were there any incentives or for water-saving fixtures or zero escaping that the district allows for residents other than the obvious savings?
You know, we we talk about that just about every budget year. Uh, it's it's a tough subject, because um, you know, we would we we would like to um encourage the use and utilization of water conserving fixtures, but the problem is those those programs can't be fully self-sufficient. Somebody who maybe doesn't participate, or 100% of our customers are going to have to pay to subsidize those programs, and we've always struggled with all of our customers subsidizing a smaller group. Uh, and and more and more, what we're finding with those water conserving fixtures, if you need a new one, that's all you're going to be able to buy. You can't buy the old non-conserving, so uh, really, there's not a lot of incentive to have people do that. They're going to have to do it if they want to replace their old fixtures, and all the new construction is definitely utilizing the low-flow fixtures and and getting that implemented.
Thank you. Um, I think you answered most all the other questions with your your uh slides here. Um, who actually does the enforcement for the district?
The enforcement, uh, the state is the primary regulator for uh water um standards. Uh, typically, the standards are set by EPA. The state just administers them and makes sure that make sure that we comply with them.
You don't have an internal enforcement unit in the district?
We just always, we we have, you know, our internal that we're always going to comply with every drinking water.
Everybody's enforcement.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
You bet.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Jones, for coming in and had some questions. I know that you're here, because um, so it's our speaker series on on uh fracking, well, the potential fracking here in Commerce City. And right now, in your service area, are you uh supplying any kind of water or or uh gray water to any of the industry?
We're not.
No?
No.
Okay. And if you did, it would have to be within the city boundaries. You just, eh, people just can't come in and say, hey, I want to buy a water from you, and we need like 1,000 gallons?
We've uh, we've talked with our board, and again, our board has has made the policy decision that they have to be included in our district. They could even be annexed to Commerce City, but if they're not included in our district, we won't serve them. So they actually have to be in our service area for we for us to provide those services to them.
Okay. And I know up Highway 85, there was a uh, was that a wastewater treatment plant that was that was just recently built?
Yes, Metro's regional plant.
Okay, so are you guys a partnership with them?
We are. We're a connector to the new plant. We haven't actually started sending flows there yet. Uh, our agreement with them says we'll start sending our flows uh from the northeast development area in 2023. Originally, we were supposed to start sending flows in 2016, uh, but they, we, you know, we went in with our development plans to start building our interceptors to get it to their plant. They really wanted us to slow down and look at a regional solution, so that Aurora, Denver, DIA, Brighton, everybody could participate and build a regional interceptor going to the plant. Uh, so Metro did that study. Metro ultimately decided that they do want to build that regional interceptor. Uh, they anticipated it's going to ready be ready to go online in 2023, so that's why they've uh backed us off to 2023 to start sending flows to to the regional plant, but we will then.
Okay. And I know um our s- our um SunCor facility, I think it's back in 2011, 12, there was a benzene leak in the um river there, um, Sand Creek, it leads into the South Platte. Now, was that any of that water, um, did the plant receive any any of that water, benzene in it?
It, we didn't. Um, the groundwater flows in our area generally go from south to north and kind of a northwest. Uh, so SunCor over by the river already doesn't really get back into our supplies at all, didn't get into any of our surface water supplies that we do anything with. Right now, we mainly use just use those for augmentation purposes, but uh, none of that got into any of our drinking water supplies.
Okay. Um, you know, when uh, just say, for instance, because we have what what two-thirds of our livial water comes, you know, through our system, is that correct?
Two-thirds through.
Two-thirds as far as servicing, I mean, and once is 12,000 acre feet, once 10. Uh, we get 4,000 acre feet from treated Denver-treated water, and Denver's surface water supply is like 5,000, so pretty much the district uh within the system, it's two-thirds of the water comes from South Adams, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Um, say, for instance, uh, operation uh industrial operation happens, come fracking happens, and and uh, there's a a leak of benzene into our livial system. Is there any kind of uh um, something in play that would protect, not not protect as far as that came into the system, but say that there was a detection of benzene in the water and to, you know, try to find that source? Um, do is is there getting with Denver that we would sh- shut those livial supplies off and then service just just service even water from Denver until they can find that leak?
We don't have anything like that in place. Uh, right now, uh, we tend to use about 2,000 acre feet of our Denver water, so we could increase it up to 4,000 for for intermediate uh benefit to the system, if we had something like that while we were trying to figure out. Uh, benzene is a volatile volatile organic contaminant, VOC, so it is a compound that granular activated carbon would remove. So we, again, we're lucky, we have already a barrier in place that helps us, heaven forbid we we ever have to, but we do have a barrier in place to help us if that should happen.
All right. And I know you're talking about the having a new system with the pellets. Uh, we just took a uh, just this year, we took a tour of SunCor, and they have a water treatment plant over there, and uh, they had a vial of water, and they showed what their process, I mean, through their process of re, you know, the reclaimed water and putting it back into the river, uh, how clear it was versus the tap water. Um, they had a vial of that from South Adams, and and you could see the di- you could clearly see the difference. Was there any consideration of of trying to do a water treatment plant uh that's consistent with what the SunCor has? I know they spent like $68 million for it, but...
I'm not familiar with their system. Um, I would challenge the clarity challenge. Uh, being a groundwater supply, we have some of the clearest water in the state of Colorado. We, you know, typically, surface water supplies have what's called turbidity, uh, just naturally as as the rivers flow and and things, they pick up sediments and and different things, and they have to act actually treat to meet turbidity levels. Our water is well far below those turbidity levels, coming straight out of the ground, so uh, I don't know what SunCor's doing, but I would challenge that that clarity of our water. I I think ours is is clear and clean as as you're going to find in the metro area. Um, but again, uh, the softening process, uh, it's not only just the pellet process, it does have filtration after the pellet process, so there will be another barrier after we remove the hardness. It'll go through a filtration process to even make it make sure we meet those high-clarity standards.
Okay. You know, and and I know the water's hard here, because the magnesium and um uh other minerals, you know, make it really hard as far as water, unless you have a water, a soft water um treatment within your 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 home, to soften the water, you know, it really helps a lot, but it's also costly. I mean, you you have treatments, uh, that type of um, um, you know, bri press, I mean, well, when the water comes in and, you know, making it soft could be anywhere from as low as 2,000, as high as $10,000 for someone to install that in their home. Um, so basi- so basically, with this news, when this treatment goes through, is that equivalent to someone having a water softener in their home?
You know, as far as most most water softeners that are in homes are ion exchange units, so they're replacing calcium with a salt molecule, sodium. Um, so yeah, this is going to pretty much replace those systems and and, you know, again, if people really want it soft, uh, they can keep those systems in, but they won't have to run them at the same levels they historically have.
Okay.
Uh, but we're we're going to get it pretty soft. Our our so our hardness will be down in the range where Denver water is. Uh, so I don't know that anybody, you don't want to get it too much softer, because it can get corrosive at that point, so you have to be careful. Um, so uh, you know, it will, and what we found, one of the decision, uh, one of the criteria we used to make this decision to go forward with the softening project, we did a survey, and in the survey, folks said that they, on average, spent about $17 a month on their softening systems, uh, buying salt, uh, doing that different things to treat their in-home water. But we think that we're going to be able to, it looks like we're going to be able to implement this uh softening process for about $7 a month uh over our typical rate increases, so we think we're actually going to save the folks uh money on on being able to get rid of those in-home systems and and actually save some money, so we're excited about that opportunity.
And now, last question. Um, I know sometimes I'll I'll turn the water on and and I'll I'll get a kind of a foul smell. Um, and it's it's just a smell, not necessarily a taste, uh, um, and it's just kind of odd that, you know, and I'm not sure what's what's causing that. Uh, we've been in this home here since uh 2007. Um, every once in a while, we're turning the water on, and there'll be an odd odor that comes out. Um, it's not a methane type smell, but I'm not, you know, I'm not sure exactly what that is. It uh, um, just consciously, I mean, in 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 this area here, we have a lot of folks who buy drinking water um from the King's Super's and from a lot of these places here on along Highway 2. And I understand about the state standard as far as EPA and, you know, what's liable for his drinking water, you know, before his tap water. Um, but but people do have a a uh a worry of the water to drink, uh, as far as boiling things like that, you know, using it, um, wash your car and all that stuff, you know, it's you're going to have some hard water spots, doesn't matter. But um, as far as drinking, a lot of people do purchase water to drink, and uh, so what can they do to offset the cost of them drink drinking water right now? Um, is there any 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 short-term solution from the uh district?
You know, I I've been in the community for 30 years, so I've drunk, I've uh have drunk a lot of the water, and, you know, I would say, drink the water, because it's safe, it meets all the drinking water standards, but I understand people uh do buy those bottles. And again, part of the of when we did the survey, part of what we looked at is folks do spend money on that bottled water, and uh, you know, I we kind of got the sense that if we soften the water, uh, I think a lot, most people uh just don't like the mineral taste associated with hard water. When you grow up with it and you're you've had it for a long time, you almost don't like surface water and the and the taste that you might have with that. They're not used to the groundwater and the mineral taste, so uh, most times when we uh talk to people about uh quality concerns, it's that hardness and that mineral taste that they don't like. Uh, we think, you know, we did a taste test when we did the analysis for the softening process, and uh, the taste test came out, uh, the softened water was very comparable with Denver water, so we think uh a lot of that mineral taste, uh, what the engineers have told us is calcium, when it's at high levels, tends to give that mineral taste, so we're going to get that cal- calcium reduced down, uh, where we think uh our water's going to taste a lot like Denver water, and I'm I'm very hopeful that less and less people will buy that bottled water.
Okay, thank you.
And and you you asked a question, the first part of that question, and I wanted to answer it, I can't remember what it was, though.
Was that brown, brown?
Oh, the smell.
Smell, yeah.
What we've, what we generally find with the smell, and and I've experienced it in my own home, is it's not the water that you smell, it's the drain. When you turn the water on, it hits the drain, and whatever might be in that drain puts that uh smell back, and and I'd say 99% of the time, what we whenever we've told somebody, you know, put a little bit of Clorox down your drain, the problem goes away. And you just think, but because you turn the water on, immediately you get the smell, well, it's not the water, it's the water hitting the drain and making the drain smell, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Hughesman?
Thank you. Um, thank you again for coming. Uh, one of the questions that continually comes up is up in the north range, where we have the separate irrigation system and all the non-potable water with the purple lines running everywhere, but whenever we look at our water bills, we're seeing a combined rate of residential water plus irrigation water, and it appears as if we're being charged full price for the irrigation water, even though it should in all accounts be cheaper. Can you explain a little bit the billing methodology so that residents can better understand that if they are and are not paying full price for non-potable water?
Sure. Really good question, another question that we we wrestle with every year during budget time. Uh, that irrigation water is cheaper, uh, less expensive for us to put into our system. The problem is, uh, we all know in Colorado that we need to encourage water conservation, and if we make that irrigation water really inexpensive, people are going to waste and and it'll mess up our water resource, our our decrees will be out of compliance with our water rights. Uh, so we made have made the decision that, you know, because we have supplies back here in the old area that are untreated as well, deep wells that don't require any treatment. So those are less expensive, but the people that are being served by the deep wells don't get uh less of a bill. So we take all those supplies, blend them together, come with a blended cost, and we charge that blended cost for both potable and irrigation, knowing that the irrigation's less, but if we did, if we charge less for it, people would use more, and and we'd be out of compliance with our water conservation program and regulations.
Anyone else? You know, I I have seen, uh, since Mr. Douglas brought it up, I have seen comments on Facebook and stuff where people turn on their faucet, and they have some brown water come out or whatever, and uh, most of the time, that's in their home, bad uh, bad pipes, some rust or what what have you, um, that that will happen. But when you do have a smell or a discoloration or anything of that nature, um, any of our residents should feel comfortable calling the district and having someone from the district come out and identify what what problem they may have or may not have, and whether it's tied to the supply, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. We we never are unhappy to go out and talk to customers about, you know, odor complaints, any complaint, any water quality concern, anything, by all means, call us, we'll come out, especially on those colored waters. Again, typically, our our water is really clear. Uh, we do, especially this time of the year, in the fall, uh, we get some water off of the Denver system, you know, it's that high-quality Denver water, but they have times, uh, this time of the year where they have some uh, you know, some nitrification processes go on with their water. Uh, they don't get as much turnover as they would like to get out at DIA, and by the time it gets into our system, it starts uh giving us some of those uh brown waters and things. So when we get those, we definitely want to hear about those, because we want to get out there as soon as possible and start... out there as soon as possible and start flushing hydrants and get that cleared up. Usually, once we start flushing hydrants, we can get it cleared up pretty quickly, but by all means, let us know when anybody sees that, so we can get out there and get that flushed out.
Thank you. You know, I also wanted to mention about the filtration plant that Suncor put in, that we went and toured. I'd recommend that, you know, you, yourself and some of your administrative folks should go take a look at it. It's a stormwater microfiltration plant to improve stormwater quality for anything coming off of their plant. Extremely sophisticated, I think, for folks that are really interested and in the field of water and water filtration, that you should go and take a look, because it's a rather impressive system that they did put in, so.
And I don't know if everybody knows, but Suncor's not on our system. They used to be, but they got off our system several years ago, and they're on Denver water system. So they, I don't know that they were actually able to collect a sample out of our system, it may have been Denver water that they were comparing it to.
And I don't know what they were sampling, because it's a stormwater filtration system, so it's not a potable water filtration system, so I'm not, but you should go take a look at it, because it's state-of-the-art new technology, and I think you'd be impressed.
Yeah, I bet.
All right, any other council members have any questions? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, Mr. Jones. I had a question about the systems in residential homes. I know throughout the country, they're not putting retrofitting, shut-off systems in people's residential pipelines. So basically, if you detect a leak from that box up to the house, that the homeowner is notified, and, you know, automatically shuts off until the system can be checked. Now, right now, what we currently have is, people won't know they have a leak until they get their bill. And sometimes, these bills are astronomical, they're really high. And I know folks have said, hey, you know, what can you do as far as the district, you know, look at my bills for the last six months, I've only used this amount, can you credit me this, or just outweigh me this amount? And I know most of the times, the district says, you know, from what I know, I'm not, I know I've had an issue with water myself, being, you know, running everything, and, you know, comes down to the homeowner. A lot of places are looking at, you know, this is a resource, and if they can shut that water out sooner, that's less water the district has to worry about being wasted. Is there any effort of today's technology to retrofit, you know, because I know you guys just changed over those boxes as far as a reader? And when they change those over, you know, no longer do you have someone driving around collecting from satellite, from the truck and everything, as far as the reader, it's all done above. Are you guys looking at doing some system like that?
So we're in the process, we started probably about three years ago, implementing what's called a smart meter reading system. The old models, you either walk the neighborhoods, or you drive the neighborhoods, and get the meeting once a month. And like you said, if you had a leak, it could be leaking for 30 days before you actually catch it. We've implemented a number of these reading towers throughout the district, and right now, we can get about 70% of the district through these smart meter reading systems. And we're looking for locations to do additional sites, to try to get as close to 100% coverage as we possibly can. But for that 70%, we do get readings about every 15 minutes, and we monitor those readings, and to the extent we see a constant leak, we go out and do make contact with the customer. We've had lots of them say, oh, thank you, thank you, we really appreciate you coming out. I had no idea that I had that leak, wherever they might have had it. So we are implementing that system.
All right, thank you.
You know, I'd like to add to that. I just recently had a South Adams water truck out in front of my house, and I thought, why are they sitting out in front of my house for so long? And the lady came up and talked to me, and she said, we've been monitoring, I've been sitting out here, monitoring your water, and it looks like when there's no usage in your home, you have seven-tenths of a gallon an hour leak. And so here's the information, they print you out a graph to be able to show exactly what's leaking. And she came up, she said, you know, it's probably a toilet with a bad seal, or something like that, please check into it. I went through, I found a toilet that had a broken piece of flange for the flap, and was able to identify the leak and get it changed right away. But I wouldn't have noticed it if South Adams representative wouldn't have sat out in front of my house and identified the fact that I had a leak, and came up and told me that this is the leak and the rate of the leak. And so I was, and you know, with my dad being there for 50-some years, I was thoroughly impressed that technology has gotten to that point where the utility provider can actually walk up and say, you're leaking seven-tenths of a gallon an hour, which, over time, it equates to a lot of water a month. And I figured that that amount of leak was putting me into that next bracket of payment. And so it really helped me out with the customer service that they offer. So Steve, I was impressed that they told me about a leak that I had, instead of me going in and saying, hey, you know, I've had this leak, are you going to help me out with my bill? So it's kind of switching to be more pro-customer on the district side, so thank you for that. Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. And to add to that, I had a story last year, you might recall, I had a leak of nine gallons an hour. Mine was a service line leak, so we ended up having to replace the entire service line, because the house is 72 years old, 80 feet of line from the meter pit to the back of the house. But I will tell you that Water District was right on point with everything, notifying me and monitoring it after the fact. So they're pretty expedient when it comes to things like that, and that was pretty massive for me. And, you know, we ended up having to shut the water off and on for about four or five days until we had that repaired. But that was, I just want to give credit to South Adams, because I worked there for 10 years, this was probably 15 years ago, so the technology back then compared to now is just remarkable. So I just want to encourage any residents, if they have any questions, just feel free to call the district, because staff is there to help, and they're really good about, you know, getting out there right away and checking those readings. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jim, I want to, again, thank you for coming out tonight. I think it's been helpful that this is on Channel 8. People will be able to see it when it runs consecutively, you know, it'll run more than once. And it'll give our residents at least some idea of what the process is and everything else. But to our residents, I would recommend that if you have any concerns or questions about water quality of any kind, reach out to the district. They will come out, very transparent organization, glad to have the relationship that we have. Also, given the fact that we are now having to deal with, again, this oil and gas discussion, and like you said, it's overseen by the state, and we have a lot of parameters that are the same way. The state allows, makes allowances and permits, and we deal with the surface side of it. That when, when, not if, when we get application for a well somewhere in our community, I just want to make sure that our staff is communicating with the Water District staff as to where this potential location would be and everything else, so that we get feedback from the district to make sure that we are looking at your best interests and the best interests of our residents for water quality and lack of contamination type of concerns. So keep that in mind as we progress. I think that will be important, that we're communicating on where wells may be located, where they may not be located, and how that would have potential effects on anything to do with our potable water supply or safety for our residents. So with that, I want to thank you again for coming in. Please, residents, reach out to South Adams for any questions or concerns. And with that being done, we will go into the study session room to finish with the city council study session for tonight. Again, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.